That committee of the whole meeting for May 5th, 2015. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Erins?
Here.
Cameron?
Here.
Urbanero?
Here.
Deanie?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here.
Under our committee meeting this evening, the first item we have falls under planning and zoning, which is now Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three items on planning and zoning. The first item is the Artist Senior Living of Bartlett Final Subdivision and PUD Site Plan for Lot Number One. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thank you, Trustee Ranky. This is a project that you have seen before. It's the Artist Senior Living Project on the east side of Route 59, just south of Apple Valley Drive. It's a three-lot subdivision, and what they are asking for is the final subdivision plot for this three-lot subdivision, and to approve the site plan, PUD plan, for the Artist Senior Living Facility, which will be on Lot One. This project, as you recall, has gone through the preliminary approval, which we granted back in 2014. It's a seventy-four-unit senior facility with thirty-eight parking spaces. This is just the layout of the site plan, and this is what it's going to look like. It will fit nicely on Lot One. The final plot went through the Plan Commission. Plan Commission recommended approval, and subject to conditions and findings of fact, a number of the conditions are engineering approval, landscaping approval, the write-in, write-out approval by IDOT, which is the ingress and egress to the site, which is right up in this slot up here. List of permitted uses for Lot Two, as you remember, we had some discussion on that, and there is an approved list of conditions that will be attached to the ordinance. There's a sidewalk, a bike path instead of a sidewalk, aluminum fence around the property on Lots Two and Three, and signage, which is reviewed separately. As I stated, the Plan Commission recommended approval of the final plot on April 9th. It is before you, prior to going on for a final vote in front of the Village Board. If you have any questions, I will answer them, and Artist is here in full with their staff.
Jim, you're looking for input from us so that we can forward this along to the Village Board for a final vote?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. Any thoughts or comments, questions, concerns?
I just had one that's been ongoing since this started a long while ago, and I'm sure it's probably been answered, but I still am curious as to why the location just to the north is so adamant about not granting access.
I'll let them answer that. We've tried. They have never really expressed an interest in doing anything. Prior developer on this site, a number of years ago at least, got to, I'll use the term "first base" with them, but he was going to pay for the entire access, redo the parking lot, as well as landscape the building that's up to the north. It's changed in ownership sometimes, and I think Artist has tried, and they are not interested.
Changed in ownership?
There's been some, those are condominiums, those ones on the north, so there's different people that we're dealing with, the previous developer, so...
I thought it's a land block to the church.
No, it's the south.
On the north. The south is the church.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
In reading some of the comments of the commission, I echo that, you know, it's unfortunate that, you know, emergency vehicles have such a hard time getting in and out of there. And I think there were some comments on there that were pretty valid, attempting to get in and out of there, the write-in, write-out only.
Yes.
But as somebody had mentioned in discussions, I would imagine if it's a big enough emergency to go over the grass.
Yes, that's what they would do.
Jim, I noticed in the synopsis of what we received at the end of the month, that economic people, development people, Tony, I presume, had talked with potential senior living facility developers. Are we directing them to sites like this potentially? And would the petitioner be open to more senior living development centers in that particular area? I mean, is that something we've considered? I just sit here in the notes.
We, I think we directed Mr. Hicks to this site when he was interested, and there are other sites in the village. We have also directed other potential users to his property for Lot Two. So I think he'd have to answer the one about the, if he'd be amenable to other users of similar...
Certainly, if you'd like to give us your comments on that.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you again. Jay Hicks, Artist Senior Living. You know, we're open-minded about the uses to go back there. It'd have to be something compatible with us, compatible with the neighbors, and something that's approvable from a traffic and other standpoint. Theoretically, a senior-related use behind us would be welcome, but obviously subject to its ability to satisfy the very stringent performance criteria that you would have. To be honest with you, and I had said this before, we've had phone calls, but I haven't wanted to confuse the issue. I've got my hands full enough getting this approval without trying to deal with somebody else, but at some point, I envision somebody coming in within the context of your code, asking you to advance something on the back, but it would be something appropriate to us. Senior would be great if it could pass that criteria.
And just for the point of clarification, I know the write-in, write-out is a big issue over the time that we've been discussing that, but from your standpoint, that's not going to be an issue. Is that correct?
Not at all. We took a very careful look at that, and it comes down to the fact that our residents don't drive. The trip generation is so small for a facility of our type. If you look at senior-related uses, I guess it went into the density spectrum. You have group homes of eight to ten residents, let's say. You've got life care communities with hundreds of residents and the ability to age in place. We specialize in a niche, and our unit count is on the low end of that, at least if you look at senior-related uses. And our residents don't drive, so we took a careful look at it ourselves. Nobody has less interest in having any sort of traffic or transportation failure out there than we do. And if we didn't think we could operate a safe, efficient facility there, we wouldn't advance it.
That's what's my understanding as well.
Thank you.
And once again, I come in contact with so many people who are influenced with this disease or disorder that I'm happy that you're continuing to pursue this and continue to come into town. I think it's great service.
Well, thank you. I've had a couple of folks in the audience pull me aside outside, asking me, "How's it coming? Do you need anyone to speak on your behalf?" Because I've got different stories, but somebody who's afflicted, who lives in town, and it'll be good to know that there's someplace close to home for them to go.
Absolutely. I would just add as well, seeing the end result with the write-in, write-out only, it seems to me that your type of a business is about the only type of a business that would be appropriate, if that's the only access in and out. So, you know, that really does fit the location, I guess.
No, I think, you know, having worked in municipal planning, that's my background, and have worked on both sides of this, I think it's, I think we're well-suited to sort of crack the nut that's this elusive property, given our low-traffic generation, our compatibility with all the adjacent uses. It's a property that kind of begs to be developed, but given some planning missteps that predate everybody in this room, I think this is an opportunity to get past that to everyone's benefit, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have the input that you need?
Yes, thank you.
All right. We'll move this matter along with Village Board.
Thank you.
Item number two is San Zary Subdivision Rezoning and Preliminary Final Plot.
This is a pretty straightforward two-lot subdivision, which you have seen before at the committee level, prior to it going on to the Plan Commission for the public hearing on the rezoning from the ER-1 district, which it is zoned, to the SR-2 Single Family Residence District. It is a two-lot subdivision, which one lot obviously is going to be bigger than the other of seventeen thousand three hundred twenty-five square feet, and the other lot is ten thousand eight hundred and forty-four square feet. The minimum lot size is the lot size that it was rezoned to, or will be rezoned to. The Plan Commission met on April 9th, discussed the two-lot subdivision, and recommended and held the public hearing on the rezoning. They recommended approval of the subdivision and also approval of the rezoning. The petitioner is here, but they intend on building a home on one of the lots and selling the other lot. So if there's any questions, I'll try to answer it. Also, the petitioner is here.
So the subdivision of the two lots was intentional. They set the parameters, is that correct?
They wanted to build a home on the bigger lot. That kind of set the parameter for the size of that home.
Was that sized lot already determined, or did they determine?
No. Based on their engineering design and the type of home that they would like to have there.
So is it likely that a smaller lot in that area is going to sell? Or are we just going to have a piece of vacant property sitting there for years?
The lots that are there are pretty similar in size to what is behind it. Generally, the trend and character of this area is that SR-2 is a pretty good-sized lot, so most of the homes in those areas are nice homes on pretty good-sized lots. This home here is tending to be a little larger than what we would normally see in this area, but that's their desire, is to build the large home.
Okay.
I don't think it'll sit vacant for long.
Isn't there a vacant house there now?
There's three buildings on this property. One is, was an old rental, and there's two barns or two sheds, if you will.
Good.
This is the former Elmer Heck property, if you remember. Elmer used to keep his tractors in those barns.
So if there aren't any other questions, we'll forward this matter on to the Village Board.
Thank you.
For a decision. And speaking of decisions, the final item we have on planning and zoning is Route 59, Sterns Road Improvements, and Village Staff is looking for us to come to a consensus so that you can draft a resolution, and we can forward that on to IDOT and DUDOT. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
All right, let's do it.
All right. We're going to go through the last couple of plans that we have, try to answer any remaining issues relative to car counts, cost of signals. We have our traffic engineer, Brett Coulter, is here, so we hope we can finalize this and bring it on to the board with the letter of intent from IDOT. So Jim, go ahead.
I'll just give you an overview, because I know everybody has seen these plans at least once before, but what I have up there is the original design plan for the east leg of the intersection that IDOT sent to us. It includes dual left-turn lanes and a barrier median across Sterns Road so that there will be no access in or out to the Brewster Creek Shopping Center. Subsequent to that plan, we had some input at not only the IDOT public hearing, but also at the village, from the shopping center owner and some other of the commercial businesses, and they had asked us to speak out on their behalf to possibly change the design for the east leg of the intersection. And subsequent to that discussion, and there was a letter sent by the mayor to IDOT asking for that, they tried to accommodate us. This was the first revision. This was reviewed back in March, might have been late February, but this design was what IDOT and DUDOT came back with. It was a left-turn lane into, a dedicated left-turn lane that allowed you to go into the shopping center, into the daycare, and then also in the east end, a left-turn on Braintree. There was no barrier median. It reduced the dual lefts to only one southbound left-turn lane. The design had to remain the same width in order to keep the geometry with the western side of 59. This design was supported by the shopping center owner and the commercial entities that exist at this northeast corner. It was not supported fully by everybody in the village's side, because there was, and our police chief and our traffic consultant raised concerns about the safety of crossing over all those lanes of traffic, and queuing up and blocking the left-turn lane and a number of other items. Subsequent to that, which was at your last meeting, we came to what I will call a compromise design. Our traffic engineer went back to, and our public works engineer and director, went back to IDOT and DUDOT and asked them for a design that would also, would be business-friendly as well as be safer. That design is what we have here and what we reviewed at our last meeting. It has a small barrier median, or shorter and length barrier median from 59 to about the shopping center entrance. It does not have a left-turn lane into the shopping center. It does preserve the left-turn lane into the daycare center further to the east, and also a left turn into Braintree. It allows for a left-out of the shopping center, eastbound, left-out, and then going eastbound during non-peak morning and evening hours. So you can come, there's a two-hour window in the morning and two-hour in the afternoon. Generally, I refer to this as peak time, and you cannot turn left out of there during the peak time, but you can do it on the non-peak time. DuPage County also wanted to see this pork chop that's at the shopping center designed changed, and the radius changed, so to make it a little harder to get in and out of there, but you can only come in right and then leave left. And then this compromise was reviewed at your last meeting. The shopping center, and subsequent, we also have to pass an ordinance prohibiting that left turn during peak hours. The shopping center owner and some of the commercial entities did not like this design. They spoke of that at the last meeting. That's where we're at. There was one other item of information, because in your packet you'll see a list of cost estimates for two alternatives, because you asked us to get a more firmer cost estimate for the Route 59 traffic signal, and subsequent changes to the Norwood Road if we choose to pursue the traffic signal as a separate project with IDOT. There are two cost estimates, and I think one, we estimated it to be about $500,000, and I think when it was, pencil comes to paper with engineer contingencies and engineering design, I think one alternative is $620,000, and the other alternative is estimated at $870,000, and that's with the crosswalks and all the bells and whistles you need for the crosswalks. So that information is in front of you, and as Trustee Ranky stated, the decision that we need to make for IDOT to continue into the Phase Two design and ultimately bid this project is to approve, or is to direct the staff to prepare a resolution that's based on this letter of intent that's attached there, and we need to spell out in the letter of intent which design alternative we want, as well as in this, in this letter of intent, we had asked for some other amenities for the intersection improvement. One of them is emergency vehicle preemption devices, which will cost the village $6,900. There is a sidewalk added to it that will be $18,918, and a shared-use path at the cost of $16,905, to make, at least in our letter of intent, our share to be $42,723,000. So that's where we're at today. Brent is here. Dan, our deputy police chief, we will all try to answer any questions you may have.
So does anybody have any further questions or comments?
What is the purpose of the crosswalk?
The crosswalk was an amenity you're referring to in the letter of intent?
Uh-huh.
That crosswalk? When we brought it to you originally, there were some questions or items that some of the trustees wanted to see, and the cross, I'm sorry, I'm confusing crosswalk and sidewalk. The crosswalk is in the estimate for Norwood Lane. That's the crosswalk you're referring to?
Is that a requirement from IDOT?
It's just an alternate. I think our engineers, maybe Dan can answer that, he was working with them, the consulting engineers decided to add that, since there's some residents around there and businesses that might, people might want to walk to.
Jim's right. They threw it in there as an option that if IDOT were to require it, and if the village wanted that crosswalk, that's the one, you know, ballpark of what that number would be. It does add cost, because you've got to add the pet signals and the striping and all that stuff. So it'd be something that if we are directed to move forward with the signal at Norwood, we would look at and then determine whether we want to move in that direction or not.
But Norwood and Sterns and 59 are two separate things, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, right. So we're making decisions with the intent of designating the preferred intersection for Sterns and 59.
That's the more immediate.
That's right.
Right, okay.
So if it, would it help us if we did a straw poll? I think we've done that in the past with regards to the budget.
I think that's an outstanding idea.
Okay, so...
And I'll tell you, I'll be happy to go first.
Okay. That, you're more than welcome to.
I like the staff's design on the intersection at 59 and Sterns. However, I believe firmly that we do have to have a traffic light at Norwood, because I think we're going to have too much traffic going down those intersections, through the residential area to bypass that. I believe that that Norwood intersection is really not what I would consider safe now. Been there. I've tried to get out of there and make a left, go south on 59, and it's not fun.
That was you?
Yeah, that was me. But I would definitely be in favor of having some type of, the design that we have at 59 and Sterns, that could be more workable, or, you know, I'd be open-minded to work with that a little more, but I do believe that we do need to have a traffic light at Norwood. And I'm looking at, and our expense for a traffic light there would be $42,000?
No, no.
No.
I misunderstood that.
Yes.
Total village cost.
The traffic signal at Norwood includes Norwood, also includes Norwood and Improvements. It's in your packet, and it, and one is, the alternate one is $620,000 and some change, and alternate two is $870,000.
That's what I thought of, but then all of a sudden I see this $42,000.
That's Sterns.
That's for the Sterns Road preemption for the traffic signal for the emergency vehicles.
So for us to put a traffic light at Norwood, it's going to cost us $600,000?
Yes.
Yes. And that would be a separate project from the 59 project. IDOT has already said they will not include that traffic signal as part of the 59 and Sterns intersection.
And it seems to me, sorry to interrupt you, Trustee Deanie, but it seems to me that that is what is confusing this whole conversation. So in terms of structure, my suggestion would be, let's first have a straw poll over the design of 59 and Sterns, and then let's discuss the intersection of Norwood and 59. So in that regard, I'll kind of start giving my comments.
You'll go first.
I prefer, I prefer the original design. I think that the left-hand turn lanes into the mall and into the daycare center are ill-advised. I think that's dangerous to turn across so many lanes of traffic. I think it's important to preserve that left-hand turn lane that would direct you, that's westbound on Sterns and would ultimately direct you southbound on Route 59. I think there's ready access, and Mr. Coulter and I talked about that. Boy, I don't know, it seems like we've been talking about this forever, but we did talk about this, and it's perfectly acceptable to enter onto the mall property from the access way that is just north of the Walgreens. And I understand the mall owner's concern about the back end of Walgreens not being the prettiest, but you know what? Thousands of people see the back end of Walgreens anyway. It's there. It is what it is. I think that it then becomes problematic that perhaps, are we dumping traffic onto Braintree? And then that's a different matter. We'll talk about the light on Norwood as part of that discussion, but I'm firmly in favor of the original IDOT plan. I think it's the safest one. I think that there will still be access to that shopping mall. It's not going to live or die. I go to the Walgreens, and I'll tell you, I take that back entrance, because it's safer, especially when I've got my two-year-old in the car. So I will not be making that left-hand turn lane, left-hand turn off of Sterns under any circumstances. So that's just my two cents on the design. I know that we have the alternative design is the revised design. So in terms of clarity, we have the original design, we have the revised design, and then we have...
The second revised design.
Yeah, which is the striping. It would be helpful in the future when we have competing designs to maybe number them, just a little bit of constructive...
I think it'd be better to label them.
Revised.
You can label them, the IDOT original plan was labeled the anti-access. The second one was labeled full business access, and the compromise was labeled somewhere in between.
Okay. So is there, who else has comments?
I have a few comments. One of the things that is predating the discussion here is the potential for traffic to back up in a left-hand turn lane there, going westbound on Sterns and taking a left turn onto 59. I looked at the traffic study numbered during peak hours. You can fit seven cars in between 59 and the entrance to that mall. If you look at the traffic count, at any given time, there's not more than six cars stacked up there. So if you have two lanes there, I think it's unnecessary. I have a tendency to favor business in these situations. I know how tough it is to get in and out of malls. I know how important it is for that extra fifteen people to feel like they can get in and get out as quickly as they need to every week. It might not be many, but that's the difference between surviving sometimes. And we had our traffic guy stand up here and tell us that this proposal that's right up here right now is safer than it is, than the intersection is right now. When he says that this proposal that's up here right now, that's approved by DuPage Traffic, I, that leads me to believe that this is the plan that would be both business-friendly and a safer alternative to what we have now.
So then I have you down for first revised, is your...
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree. I have never come out of Braintree, this street I live in, and so I need four, two left-turn lanes. So it's hard for me to imagine that we should have that plan. I liked, I like the potential Illinois 59 Norwood, oh, no, 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 I don't like, wait a minute. I like the one with the one left-turn lane and the other lanes.
Sorry, agree with you, Ken. Well, if the latest one that I'm looking at here maintains the two left-hand turn lanes, but yet allows its access into the childcare by making a U-turn, I'd be in favor of that, simply because I think that it's a good compromise. When we have one left-hand turn, it backs up, it studies may say six cars, but I have been in traffic there, and it's been, it's been backed up at least to the childcare and maybe all the way to Braintree from time to time. Not all the time, but occasionally it has been.
The entire traffic. I've seen it that way.
Yeah, and so you get all the lanes.
Now you're going to add another extra two lanes.
Add two lanes to it, and that should shorten the amount of cars sitting in that, those lanes. And yet, with patience, people could make a left-hand turn into the shopping center and do the U-turn. And I think that's, that's fair to have the four lanes, and a good compromise to the business, I think. So I would, I'd be in favor of this.
So we have two for the DuPage alternative, one for the original, and one for the staff-recommended alternative.
Well, we have other trustee.
Trustee.
Oh, no.
Carbonero.
I know. Go ahead.
I haven't changed my mind the first five times we've talked about this. The original one is not to be looked at as whether it's business-friendly. How about if we look at if it's death-friendly? There are 200 children at these daycare centers that have, their parents pick them up on a daily basis. They all go down Norwood, and they all go down Braintree. Why? Because they can't pull out left to go east on Sterns. The two buses that take the children from the daycare centers to the schools that are east of the daycare centers, the two buses go down Norwood, down Braintree, to turn left to get east on Sterns. Whether we put a left in or left out here, nobody's going to use it, because they can't get out. And I'm sorry, my patience while people are driving? Are you kidding me? Rush hour traffic, it's screw you, get out of my way, I need to be going. We have a possibility of having seven people back up to turn left...
We have a possibility of having seven people back up to turn left to go into the egress. What happens to driver number eight and driver number nine? They get killed on Route 59. Left in, left out? No, it's got to go. It's been a mess for 24 years. So number one was the original. If it wasn't a safe design, I don't think IDOT would have given it to us in the first place. Okay? The only reason they changed it is because we asked them to. So I would vote for number one because it is the safest, and it is business-friendly. It's child-friendly.
What if that ceases to be a childcare center?
It may very well happen.
Then we're making a decision upon a temporary use.
Two original, two DuPage, one alternative.
So that leaves trustee Dany and trustee Hopkins?
Yep.
I would vote for the original design. I think it's the safest for all the reasons that have been mentioned.
Thank you, trustee Dany.
I'm still mulling it over. Yeah. You know, I just know that, I've worked with staff for a good number of years, and I put a lot of confidence in what staff, our staff and our village engineers and what they've come back with after analyzing everything and whatnot. And just based on the confidence that I have in our staff, I would have to go with the plan that they proposed.
So two, two, two and two.
I guess we let IDOT decide.
I have, I have three for the original design, two for the first revision, and two for the second revision. That's...
Oh, yeah.
That's how I have it. Is that square with everybody?
That's what I also have. So it's far from a, it's far from a clear consensus, but original has more votes, so that's your input, and we'll look forward to a resolution on the next Village Board meeting.
Thank you, and we'll move that along.
Can I ask a question or request something? Before we decide on, which is a separate issue, the Norwood intersection, can we please get some traffic counts there? The north and south bond Braintree, the east and west Norwood, the east, or the east Norwood to north Braintree, the east Norwood to south Braintree?
Yes, we can do that.
I just, I think, I think it makes a big difference because I don't, I'm not sure, I want to be sure that the people in, I don't know where I live.
Braintree. Braintree in Norwood?
No, Bartlett Lake Estates. That we're not counting, or the people in the Bartlett Lake Estates aren't the ones that are causing the traffic. You know, so I think we have to, hmm, I'm a contributor.
Well, as someone who...
So I think we need an actual count.
We'll do that and get back.
We'll get that.
And I would also like to see...
The actual question.
Can I finish, Greg? That's okay. In the material that, we're talking about the 620, that includes the modifications to the pork chop or whatever on Norwood as well?
It includes a modification to the drive into the Dunkin' Donuts, I believe.
It provides some widening and widening in the egress into Dunkin' Donuts, but it does not provide for that pork chop.
Well, it does include the restriction of eastbound traffic on Norwood to Braintree. That would be prohibited to emergency vehicles only, and I think Mr. Lewis had a comment as far as allowing school buses to do the egress.
But we're making no decisions on that at this point, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, because that's something I think we need a lot more talk about as far as, I agree with trustee Aaron's about the traffic study and how much it's affecting not only the south Braintree people, but I think if that being the case, you have to start talking, if you're stuck about modifying Norwood, you have to start asking other people in the Bartlett Lake Estates for their input and their involvement as well. Because now you're going to affect not only the people on the south Braintree, but you're going to affect a lot of other people, and we just don't know the particulars of, we don't know the particulars of really what's, who's using Norwood as a cut-through. If people are using it as a cut-through to get to 59, to go north on 59, that's a lot different than people using it just to go to McDonald's or Dunkin' Donuts. So, and then if you shut down or modify that, that has the potential to increase traffic down Braintree further and influence a lot of other people.
But Mike, I would say to you, before we, that's a huge undertaking. And before we do that, can we just look at the traffic counts and then...
Sure, I'm good with that in the beginning, as long as we don't let the, we don't let the rest of the people in that subdivision get out of our sight.
No, why would we?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I don't think we can be too tunnel-focused. As much as we want to help people on south Braintree, you know, and be, and be good to them, I think, I think we have to be fair to anybody else that might be influenced by this whole situation.
Well, obviously, we're going to want public input, and it sounds like we want to look at traffic studies. My question is much more pointed, and it's to the south Braintree folks, and I'll characterize it that way, the south Braintree folks. One of my big concerns with the traffic light is unintended consequences, and I want to make sure that you are 100% comfortable with the idea that there may be some unintended consequences. And I think trustee Cameron has expressed this previously, living on Auburn, you know, that one of the unintended consequences might be more traffic on Auburn.
Right.
So we do, you know, it does make sense to take this holistic approach, but it also makes sense for the south Braintree folks to be very firm in their opinions in that this is what they want to do, because there's obviously a huge financial cost, and there's some, there's some danger there. So as long as, how are we going to go about soliciting the public input? What's our next step on this?
Well, we need to talk about that. Certainly, we want to advertise this issue, make sure we have it online and the information that we send out in our tweets, but we may want to do some more direct soliciting of addresses in that neighborhood to make sure we really do hear from folks.
And I think the south Bartlett, or he's saying south Bartlett, I mean, south Braintree folks have done a good job of articulating their position to us, and I'm very comfortable with their position, but it sounds like some of the other trustees are concerned about some other folks. So if we can, we can get some more input in here, let's make a decision and not have to take six meetings. I think, I think Vince alluded to that. You know, we'll get the facts together, and we'll make a decision on this one.
Great.
I need to ask you, is there any grant money available for that, for the traffic light if we were to go in that direction in Norwood?
Our engineer, our director of public works is shaking his head, no.
You know, before we go ahead and push this along and have them suggest to IDOT that we're going back to the original plan, and with no disrespect to the new trustees, I have a little bit of an issue with somebody that just started talking about this this evening, putting in the weigh-in vote. I don't know what anybody else feels, but we've been talking about this for a long time. And, yeah, and the weigh-in vote, there's a lot of moving parts here.
Yep.
There are a lot of moving parts at this intersection. What you've done is you've just discounted the businesses at that intersection's request.
I think trustee Hopkins and trustee Dany have both been here through a couple of these meetings, and if they're comfortable, they're comfortable. I can't speak for them, but that's how, that's how I'd respond.
Were they here when the representatives basically said that Walgreens is, and similar situations, has went out of business?
Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to answer them if they're either comfortable or not.
I'm sorry, I don't know. We've had Mr., shoot, the gentleman that owns the shopping center.
Mr. Cortez is here now, yeah.
He's right here.
Oh, thank you, sorry. He's expressed his opinion. We always have to be conscious of how this is going to affect the shopping center. Why would you think we don't have the weigh-in vote?
Well, I'm just saying, a new trustee that hasn't been through all these meetings.
Oh.
His vote cast is the deciding vote to go all the way back to the beginning.
I'm sorry.
Well, that might be partially our fault for weighing it out six meetings. If we would have passed it on the fourth or the fifth, it wouldn't happen then.
Well, that's, I just leaned over to trustee Carbinero, and I said, you know, you really would have done us a favor, Aaron and I, if you had voted on this before we were appointed.
It's not an easy situation. I just, I just know that we're going to, we're going to have some very disappointed business owners. Extremely disappointed because the access going in and out of there, you think that it's going, you think it's going to get bad now, and people trying to get in and out of that shopping center? Imagine the people coming over from the, from the east if they're going west, getting into the shopping center, not being able to turn left out. If there's any traffic at all, they got to wait for the traffic to clear to do their little U-turn. They're going to do that one time.
And then go down Braintree.
Well, perhaps we shouldn't change it at all.
Yep. Which is the reason why we need to expedite the second part of this.
Then you think they're going to go all the way to Norwood, take a left, and come all the way back to Sterns and go home?
Rather do that than pull out six lanes of traffic. Already lost it. I know how it feels.
Disagree.
Trustee Hopkins, you look like you have something to say. You're leaning forward, awfully far.
Does, does the traffic consultant have anything to say about the original design?
No.
Does he object to this?
No.
No.
I don't, and I can't explain it, I don't know why, but the, that shopping center has a heck of a lot more accessibility, or it's easier to access than Bartlett Commons across the street, which is why they've had a difficult time in developing. So I don't know what the answer to that is, but people don't want to go into Bartlett Commons because they have to make a left-hand turn east onto Sterns Road. So put that in the mix, and maybe we shouldn't change anything at all.
Does the traffic consultant...
Our consultant is here. Would you like him to come up and answer?
Sure.
Your any questions? Brent Coulter is our traffic consultant.
When they, when you figure into a traffic study, do you figure movement of traffic in the shopping center?
The traffic study you're referring to is, is the traffic study that IDOT did as part of the intersection development. It's called Intersection Design Study, and their primary focus was on moving traffic through the intersection of Route 59 and Sterns Road. So they did not do any special studies of the Brewster Creek Shopping Center access. Their focus was on the main intersection. And the safest and most efficient design to serve the main intersection is the original IDOT proposal, which was the dual left turns and the barrier median on, on this particular leg of Sterns Road. So that's how they arrived at, that's how IDOT arrived at their original design.
So what did you do for this particular design?
Well, we didn't do any design work in terms of the original. We reviewed it, and I've stated continually throughout this process that as a traffic engineer, whose primary focus is moving traffic and traffic safety, that I favor the original design. With that being said, we did look at a, at what I think you're calling tonight, the compromise option or the revised version two.
The partial barrier median.
Which would be the partial barrier median, allowing left turns out. You can get in to Brewster Creek, but it would be a little further east with a U-turn, going back and making a right turn into the shopping center, so.
So the answer is no? So you did not do a study for traffic movement in the shopping?
We've analyzed the operation of the main intersection and the impact of these various designs on the main intersection. The access to the businesses in Brewster Creek has been addressed by the business owners within the shopping center. So we've done no special outside study of the Brewster Creek access per se. The issue is not, the issue that I hear you debating is, is the impact on, on the businesses under these three different options. And that's something that you've heard from the business community on, and you can make your own determination on based on your experience, but we've not done an economic study to determine the impact of a barrier median on business activity or anything like that, so.
But you're under the impression at least that the DuPage County traffic people have good reason to suggest this alternate plan that they put up here last, that we've come to last, and you feel that that's a safe alternative as well, I'm assuming?
Well, this doesn't help you out at all with your deliberations, but you now have three options on the table that both IDOT and the county have indicated that they would be willing to construct depending on the outcome of your board deliberations. So any of these options, as far as the state or the county are concerned, are on the table and would be constructed if Bartlett so indicates, you know, in your decision on this.
And therein lies the Achilles' heel, is that I don't know about the rest of you folks, but I've been at shopping centers where you have to do that little U-turn, and then you have to do the dance out of it and try to do a U-turn around it to try to get back to the direction you were going. That's essentially what we're creating here for that business, and I adamantly disagree with those barrier medians.
Well, and my concern is that, at least with this option, in the best-case scenario, we have the opportunity to turn in in a way to get into the shopping center, but without that, people will definitely go to Braintree. I have, I have no doubt with that, that they'll go down, people going east on Sterns will say, oh, I can't get in, so now where are they going to go? They're going to go to Braintree, they're going to cut up Norwood, they're going to come in the back way, because now they're already committed to go eastbound, and there's no other options. And so I think that poses a problem.
You know, first of all, we've already kind of gone through our respective positions, but if you want to engage in this type of mental exercise, then let me ask you this. Don't you think that it's dangerous to put all of the traffic that's going to turn left into that mall into the parking lot of the daycare center?
It won't go into the parking lot?
Under the revised plan, sure, well...
Then make a U-turn and go right in.
It's not in the same place.
No, sure is, it's right there.
Well, yeah.
I, you know, I don't see that. I don't see that at all, and I think it also discounts access to Brewster Creek off of Route 59.
We're trying to, from the ways that I can't agree with the people from south Braintree, I do believe that this is going to cause more traffic to Braintree and bring more people in, and it's going to create more of a problem.
Okay, so let's, let's allow the left turn in and out, okay? And at 5:30 PM, when you can't turn left out of there, where do you think they're going to go? Same place you're going now.
What are you talking about? Are you talking about the Walgreens, or are you talking about a Braintree?
Yes. You allow that left turn left out, and at 5:30 PM, when they can't make that turn, where are they going to go? Down Norwood to Braintree. So it's irrelevant whether that's there or not.
Well, during the rest of the day, that's just not, there's four hours during the day, aren't they only hours we need to be concerned about?
Hold on.
Okay, but if they can't make the turn out, they're going to go down Norwood to Braintree. So whether it's there or not, so there's a second part to this, because we're trying to fix five problems.
Four hours during the day.
Right. We're trying to fix five problems at this intersection. Sterns and 59, Braintree, Norwood, and how people can turn left and inside and out of egresses that shouldn't be there because they're grandfathered. So we're trying to fix a cluster mess, and we can only do it one step at a time.
Yeah, but doing it what we're doing, we're going to send more traffic down Braintree, I'm convinced of it, we're just going to irritate more people.
All the more reason why we need to get to the second phase and see if we can put a traffic light there to alleviate the congestion.
I don't disagree with that.
I have to tell you, Vince, that Tom and I leave our house many times between the hours of 5:30 and 6:30, which I feel are the top, the peak hours. And even though it's, what, 100 yards east of the shopping center, we still get out to turn left.
Of the egress?
Braintree.
Left out of Braintree, I'm sorry, left out of Braintree onto Sterns.
Braintree's not a discussion, it's the egress.
It's not like there's a constant parade on Sterns going west. You can still turn left out of that shopping center.
Braintree was not the discussion.
It's no more difficult to turn left out of the shopping center than it is to turn left out of Braintree.
Braintree was not the discussion, it was the egress at Sterns, at Walgreens.
No, you said, no one can turn left out of there.
Out of the egress of Walgreens. Okay, so whether they can make it or not, they're going to go down Norwood down to Braintree.
So at some point, we have to... So at some point, we have to...
Get to the second part.
...determine whether or not further discussion is gonna be fruitful. You, does anybody else have anything they wanna say? Okay, you have your input? Well, I think we're all pretty comfortable unless, so I think we're all set then.
I think I'd like to hear from the business owner.
Okay, well, we have heard from him quite a bit.
Well, you went to talk about unintended consequences, and Mr. Cameron hit it right on. Irregardless of what the disasters would do to the best commercial property in Bartlett, those people will go make a right on, a left onto Braintree and come around when they, once they realize they can't get through any other way. So what you're doing is, that is...
Let me ask you this, well, why wouldn't they, if you're expecting them to make a U-turn in front of the daycare, why is it less likely that they're gonna make a U-turn in front of Braintree?
Aaron, I don't think we're supposed to be debating with our residents.
No, I'm asking him a question, because I really, I'm interested in your input.
Well, that U-turn would be more functional. I mean, they wouldn't like making a U-turn in front of Braintree either, but that U-turn would be more functional, so they'll recognize what's going on when that U-turn is at that location. But Braintree is what they're used to. They would make a normal left turn there. So there is a functionality to this plan. You know, obviously, for 24 years, we just did the mark, just did a traffic study on the Brewster Creek Center when Walgreens was approved, and that access drive exit was rated a C by KLOA, reviewed by Bartlett's traffic consultant. So we're working on something that really is really a work for the intersection, and that's what's affecting our driveway. To cut off, 20 businesses are gonna be adamantly opposed to what you're doing. They threw out some compromises, we brought on to the first compromise. Walgreens wrote a letter strongly supporting the first compromise. Some people had thoughts, they came up with a second compromise. The first plan, when it was introduced, Jim called and told me, he told IDOT people he wouldn't do that to the residents or its businesses. And now we're back to that plan. I mean, there are incredible unintended consequences, it will be a disaster for the center itself, and it will be a disaster for traffic and safety.
Thank you. Mr. Coulter, what are your thoughts on a U-turn in front of the daycare versus a U-turn in front of Braintree?
The turning path is essentially the same, and I think what would happen under that, what we're calling the second revision plan, is that if somebody were to make a U-turn, remembering that there is alternative access to enter Walgreens, as you noted earlier, which is off the right-in, right-out driveway on Route 59. That serves any traffic that would otherwise make a left turn from Sterns into Brewster Creek. So assuming that somebody doesn't figure that out and does get on Sterns eastbound and needs to make a U-turn to go back into the shopping center, I think it's likely that they would take the first option, which is that left turn lane that would allow them to make a U-turn in the vicinity of the daycare center. So from the physical standpoint of making the U-turn, they're probably the equivalent of each other, but I think people, if they do make the U-turn, would probably choose the first option that's available, which is near the daycare center. And that daycare center drive is inbound only, there is no outbound traffic that would conflict with a U-turn at that location.
Thank you, any further questions or comments?
If I may, Richard Lewis from Braintree, as you know. I think Mr. Carbonaro's comments actually make the most sense to me here. This discussion keeps going on and on, and it's really kind of, to be quite honest, kind of starts to lose a bit of common sense with some of it. This traffic is going to do nothing but increase over the years. This is a long-term decision, and we certainly feel, from all kinds of perspectives, that the traffic light at Norwood and 59 has to be paired with this decision. It has to be. There is going to be all kinds of increased traffic, as the Sterns Roads Bridge is complete, when I say complete, with the four lanes being finished through the railroad tracks out there, is going to increase the flow of traffic. The production of new homes and businesses west of 59 is going to increase traffic. The senior facility that was just approved with the left-in and right, or right-in, right-out only, is going to create increased traffic. You're gonna have people leaving that, their employees, at rush hour, coming down, if they live south on 59, they're gonna come right to the intersection of 59 and Sterns looking for a place to turn around. That kind of stuff is going to continue to happen. So you can do a traffic study if you want on Braintree, you're wasting the villages and the residents' money to do that. I've invited you, if anybody that's been down that, you notice and you know right away where that traffic's going. It's coming through, it's going to McDonald's, or McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts, it's coming right back. I followed a truck today that turned down the road, came down Braintree, stopped at Dunkin' Donuts, and was gonna go back that way. It's just, it's very common. It is not cut through traffic coming, trying to avoid the light. Now, will there be some of that? Certainly there will be. So, you know, it's really time to make, I realize, a very hard decision. It's a lot of money, no doubt, but for the long term, you've gotta put that light in there. If you don't put that light in there, you're just creating a bigger problem. Regardless of the three or four plans that you talk about on 59 and Sterns, it was brought up, there's no left end, or no exit at that egress during peak hours. And by the way, those peak hours are not just in the morning and the afternoon, try going through that intersection Saturday about 1:00 o'clock sometimes. It is backed up. People can't get out of there. So no matter what you do here, you start to force traffic back down Norwood, down through Braintree, and creating an unsafe condition for those residents and the children that live in that neighborhood. I agree, if the buses and things wanna go through that neighborhood, by all means, come through, we welcome them with open arms, come on through. Quite frankly, if we could figure out a way to let some of those parents that are picking up their kids cut through the neighborhood, personally, I'd be fine with that. I don't think we have a mechanism to do that. But if they have a light, that this intersection they can get out of, great. In terms of the other residents in the neighborhood, certainly, I think their comments should be looked at. However, if you look at what we're really asking, we're asking for, if this is closed off, which I, by the way, suggest completely closed off, not just one-way closed off, we're not talking about residents that need to go to Walgreens or any of these things, they have to drive another 300 feet and take a right on Sterns to get to the shopping mall. Not a huge inconvenience. If they need to get back to the neighborhood, they come out here to the light, they take a right, they go right back down Auburn, they're right back in the neighborhood. Not a huge inconvenience. We are not putting now those residents in any safety issue whatsoever by preventing them from making a turn 300 feet sooner. So, you know, do what you need to do. We've certainly tried to make the point, very common sense, and looking at this whole intersection and what's been going on here for years, and it's only gonna get worse. Quite frankly, you guys can make this decision right here, right now, today, and I can't imagine that it would be a bad one. Thank you.
Got that figured out.
Any other questions or comments? I mean, I'm prepared to make a decision about the traffic light, but if Trustee Aaron's and Trustee Cameron want more time...
I have no problems with the traffic light proper, I have a problem with the pork chop and stopping people, traffic from going down Norwood, because it directly, with all due respect to Mr. Lewis, he is making assumptions about how many people are going to McDonald's and to Dunkin' Donuts. He doesn't know the numbers, I don't know the numbers, and you make assumptions, now...
Come stand on the corner and watch.
I know that, Rich, but you know, you can say what you want, but you don't have the numbers to be able to substantiate that. And I agree with Trustee Aaron's from the standpoint that it may be the people in our community that live there that are making the traffic and cutting down Norwood, but it should be their right to come down that street if that's what they want. And I think we would need to talk to those other people before we shut it down to just make you people happy. Obviously, we'd like to do something to help you, but, you know, I don't wanna do it at the expense of everybody else that lives around that lake and that Bartlett Lake Estates. I think that, I think you have to take those people's thoughts into consideration. I think that there's, and I disagree with you, it is not safe, or it is not the safest way to get back around by going out to the light and making a right back onto 59. That's the whole issue here, that we've said we don't think 59 is that safe, and we're trying to look for ways to make it safer. So now you're taking the people from inside the subdivision and telling them, "You can't go back to your house, now you gotta go back out to 59, and you gotta make a right, you gotta go down Auburn, or you have to go and make a left, and you gotta go back down to Sterns and cut back down Braintree." It becomes more complicated than just saying, "It's not a big deal." It is a big deal. And I think that it could give problems to people that are looking at this saying, "I never knew this was gonna happen, I didn't know we were gonna have increased traffic down whatever street it may be." So I have some problems with that. I have no problems with the street light in Norwood. I'd be quite happy with seeing the street light there, but I'm certainly opposed to shutting down Norwood, and I'm even, at this point in time, opposed to making it one-way. So that's my two cents on it.
I, Trustee Cameron, I agree with you 100% on that. You know, we didn't build that street just at this point in time, make it one-way or cut it off, really doesn't make any sense to me. What are you proposing, that we do a traffic count or something? Where do we move from here?
That's what I had...
That's what Trustee Aaron's had mentioned.
We have to move forward, you know? We're gonna sit here and debate this all night, and we have to have some direction, and I'm not clear on what direction you wanna go in.
I'm suggesting that we wait until we can do a traffic count, we wait on the decision to put the light in at Norwood. The other one, no. The, as far as the Sterns Road 59 intersection, no, I think we should make a decision on that right away.
What did we just vote on?
We didn't, it was a straw vote, it wasn't a binding vote.
So then, then we'll have a resolution before the village board, and we'll get a final say on the Sterns and 59 intersection at that time.
But don't we really wanna package this all together?
I think that would make an awful lot of sense, but if we, if some of us, and I don't mean this in a negative way, but if some of us aren't ready to make the decision about the stoplight, I don't think we should allow the stoplight to prevent us from giving our input to IDOT. I mean, IDOT's waiting on us, we have been talking about this, it seems like there's somewhat of a consensus, let's move forward on that. Now, with regards to the stoplight, if Trustee Aaron's needs more data, Trustee Cameron needs more data, let's, maybe we can keep that on a short leash and come back and let's make a decision. Vince, you have something to say?
When is the estimated start date of the project that IDOT wants an answer?
IDOT wants our input so that they can go into Phase 2 Engineering, which is the final design engineering. Then they will put the project on the, they'll bid it and put it on the Transportation Improvement Plan, or...
Were they two years off, Brent? Or Lee, Dan?
Well, two years off.
All right, so we have two years to make a decision before we actually make any changes to Sterns and 59?
No, once you put that resolution together at that intersection, you're, they're going to bid that project.
They will design it... Let me rephrase what I just said.
Yeah.
When they start the project, we have two years to decide what we're gonna do at Norwood.
You could look at it that way.
Okay, that's what I meant to say.
We will get, after this goes into this design phase, when they get ready to bid it, we will get an intergovernmental agreement, what they call a local agency agreement, they'll put the costs in there, and then we have to commit to that. It'll include this $42,000, so far, that's all our local share will be.
Chris Sterns and 59.
Chris Sterns and 59, yes.
In all fairness to the new appointees tonight, you know, Aaron and myself, I'm going to ask for another two weeks on this, I wanna look at this again in depth, I wanna come into it with more information, I've heard a lot this evening, but I want another two weeks.
Well, you're not voting tonight, it's just a straw vote, and you would come back in two weeks, where you will vote.
Before anything is drafted, before we move any forward on anything, I want two weeks. We're gonna meet in two weeks, what's two more weeks mean?
No, we're going, nothing will be done.
Well, we have to have, we have to have something for you, that's what you're telling us.
That's correct.
In two weeks, we were prepared to draft...
Let me step in here a second, Jim. What will happen here, Trustee Danny, is that we're gonna direct them to put together a resolution. If that resolution, when we have discussion at the next board meeting for approval, is not something that everybody has agreed on, which means you are gonna get a second look at this, you'll get a second look at what we're talking about, we can, we can basically at that point amend that resolution.
Fine, fine, you amend, yeah, that'll work, fine.
Yep, okay, all right.
We'll do that.
Thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Great.
Thank you, Chairman. Is that, is that good?
That's, I'm happy.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Rankin. Next item on our committee agenda is Department of Public Works, which is Chairman Cameron.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm used to directing my comments towards Jim, but I think we gotta go to Dan this evening, so let's, if you can explain this, Dan, I think we'd all like to hear a little bit more of what's going on.
What we have today is related to our...
Is the microphone on?
Yeah, pull it closer to you.
There we go. Sorry about that. Thank you, Trustee Cameron. What we have tonight is, our wastewater treatment plant has an EPA discharge permit, NPDS permit, and it actually expired January 31st of this year, so it's past due. The reason for that is the Illinois EPA and the US EPA are setting limits for phosphorus on all wastewater treatment plants. The reason for that is phosphorus contributes to algal blooms, especially down in the Gulf of Mexico and along the Mississippi River, all the states have already set this limit, Illinois is one of the last ones to do this, and the US EPA has basically forced I EPA to set this limit. What we've been doing, Bob Allen and John Poulier, our sewer supervisor, have been working with the DuPage River-Salt Creek Work Group. It's a group consisting of all the POTWs, the wastewater treatment plants within the Salt Creek and DuPage River watershed, along with Sierra Club and environmentalists, we try to work on improving the habitat along the DuPage River and Salt Creek. What they've been doing is negotiating with US EPA and I EPA to give us time to implement phosphorus limits at our wastewater treatment plant. Basically, what is being proposed in these special conditions that have been worked out with this DuPage River-Salt Creek Work Group, is we would not have a limit on our treatment plant for up to 10 to 11 years if we complete projects, and it consists of environmental projects along the DuPage River and Salt Creek, like dam removals, all projects that would enhance the water quality and the aquatic life along these watersheds. They've gotten it approved by the US EPA and the I EPA, and they're at a point where the EPA is getting ready to issue these NPDS permits, and that's why we need to start to act on it, because Downers Grove Sanitary District is going to be the first one, they're gonna be getting their permit sometime this week, and they expect all of us that have expired permits to follow within the next week or two. So we're gonna have to act fairly quick and decide whether we're in or whether we're out. If we're in, as I said, you'd have that 10 to 11 years before we'd have the phosphorus limit at our wastewater treatment plant. In the packet, I showed by deferring 10 to 11 years, the cost for chemical treatment of phosphorus elimination is roughly $250,000 for us. We're looking at roughly $1.4 million savings over a 10- to 12-year period, so it's something that we looked at and said, "This makes sense." If we don't go along with these special conditions that the DuPage River-Salt Creek Work Group has negotiated, then we would basically say we're out, and then the EPA is going to give us three years to install, design and install phosphorus treatment at our wastewater treatment plant, and we will start paying that operating and chemical cost from that point forward. So that $250,000 to $300,000 is gonna be ours, and if we can postpone it for eight years, roughly, it seems to make sense to us. So that's our recommendation.
So we're saving $250,000, but what is it gonna, what is the cost gonna be to start implementing this in a couple of years? implementing this in a couple of years?
Well, what we'll be doing is, the, the, based on the work group's plan, we'd be paying about $31,000 this year, and then it ramps up, if you see the payment plan on the last page, goes from roughly $31,000 to $45,000, to $46,000, to $70,000. That's, the $250,000 would be the chemical, are you asking as far as how much is it gonna cost us ultimately to get to treatment?
Right.
We still have to determine that. One of the things that we have in our capital program right now is to bring, to have a facility plan update at our wastewater treatment plant, where they're gonna look at all these implementation plans for phosphorus. We still have to determine whether chemical treatment or biological treatment of phosphorus is the most cost-effective for us. Biological tends to have a higher upfront cost, but less chemicals, so O and M later on is, is cheaper. Chemical has lower upfront costs, but you have that ongoing chemical cost forever. So we need to look at that and determine which option is best, and that's what we plan to get done this year.
But I think we have the opportunity over the next eight to 10 years to spend $31,000 up to $70,000 as our share of improvements to the Salt Creek Basin, and in that same timeframe, being able to put off our own phosphorus problem, save, how many million did you say, though?
About 1.4.
1.4 million, while we're doing good things to the basin and deciding whether we want to use chemicals or bugs.
Right.
And it's projected that, I see here fiscal year '22, '23, it's like up to $77,000, and every year it seems to be going up 2,000 or 3,000. I'm assuming there could be a time in Bartlett's history where you're spending $100,000 a year on those or better, I mean...
Yeah, this is the plan to get all the improvement, those environmental projects done along the DuPage River and Salt Creek. Our, this, this isn't the cost, after this, we would be implementing the phosphorus removal at our wastewater treatment plant. That cost is yet to be determined depending on which method we choose.
All right, okay. Any other questions by the board? If not, then what are we asking to do here?
It's, it's discussion-only, we'll have it on the board meeting, next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chairman Cameron, being in for this evening, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
By Trustee Cameron, seconded by Trustee Carbonaro, the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
We're adjourned.